...in order and start with pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for today.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for last week.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I will move to approve the claims for payment for this week.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. It's not 10:15, so I'm gonna skip this and move on to the next ones. I gotta wait till 10:15 for the auction, and I'll come back to it then. Next is Chris Weeding regarding resolution for trail and Deb, I believe you're here for him.
Yes. I would like to bring before the board the resolution to support the application for the state recreational trails program, grant application. If you recall, when we first started the Owl River Trail project, Harden County took the lead back in, I believe, 2013 approximately, when we applied for the first round of funding. And then again, in 2014, Marshall, the city of Marshalltown, took the lead on that application. So, here we are in 2015. We're able to go back to the table and apply for some of those funds. Again, that fund would help us construct 11 bridges along a 17-mile trail segment between Steamboat and Union, and help stabilize the trail for some access, because at this time, the trail is closed because of it being unsafe and not being able to put motorized vehicles like a snowmobile or having it accessible to the public. So that would help. Also, if we were awarded this grant, it would have a small segment, about a .84 mile segment in Marshalltown extending from their 12th Street to the South Center Street overpass. So, with the majority of that grant being spent here in Harden County, so... Asking for your support of the application and moving forward with that.
Yeah, I've talked to Chris quite a bit on this. He can describe this in about three hours, but... No, what it is, is we'd be the leading county in this, on this grant application, and when that comes through, they're reimbursement grants. So as they do segments, we would have to pay, and they get reimbursed back to the grant. And I don't think that, while I know there's no cost to the county on any of these, it's all through the grant or through separate funding that they've had for matching grants and things like that.
Correct.
And I think he said 75, a little over 75% of it will be in Harden County on this one.
Correct, yep. I said there was just a small segment on the Marshalltown, so...
Last year, Marshall County took the lead on the grant application, and we're just kinda rotating back and forth, it seems like. I don't have any questions. Do you guys?
I was at the meeting listening to you.
I got one question here.
Yes. I'm concerned about this trail funding, when the cleanup of the railroad is even, rail that isn't even done yet. They've gone along and left a considerable amount of debris along their cleanup route. They've gone on to property that I own, and they've taken rail that did not belong to them and left the old ties in the ground because they weren't no good.
That would be with the salvage company. The salvage company had a retainage.
Yeah, and Owl River Railroad. And we, I think, before we get too carried away on this funding of these trails and stuff, we need to make this contractor responsible and get him down there, because we're gonna fund this trail, and, and these guys are gonna walk away from this.
That, that's, that, those are two different scenarios. This one's a grant application for the funding. The other one's for the retainage side of the rail project itself. They have $70,000 in retainage, I believe.
They won't even touch what mess they left.
Well, they still have it there, and they can, they're still responsible for that up until that part. But still...
They'll walk away from it.
Well, still, still on the hindsight, if you don't move forward on it, we're still in trouble.
Alright.
I can go ahead and answer.
The only question I have for the trail is I would prefer it not be motorized at all. Walking bikes, bicycles, and walking trail. Because you start getting snowmobiles and stuff up there, they're gonna veer off, like they do now without a trail, go right through our property and our friend's property that, up there by the Lavelle, old Lavelle station, the bulk stations and stuff. We own that property, property up there, and so does a friend of ours. And they, the snowmobiles already encroach on our properties. You put a trail up there and allow those snowmobiles on there, they're gonna go wherever they want up there. Even more so. So I would, you know, a walking trail, bicycle trail, I'm all for it. Just leave the motorized vehicles off it. 'Cause we have ATV kid, we have kids in the neighborhood, and they're ATVs up there and encroach on our property too. You're kidding, and one of them even got stuck in one of the ditches out there this last winter and just made a big mess out there. On that, that prairie area when you're going out the gravel road. He went totally off the, you know, but the trail, he doesn't even follow a trail. He goes wherever he wants. And so, for that reason, I would like to omit the motorized part of it. And I don't know if that makes the funding different, 'cause it wouldn't have to be as solid for us.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, and I've stated this quite a few times. Right now, all they're really looking at is...
Is the funding.
Is the walking and bike trail.
Okay.
But, but if... But if you're looking at getting grants, I don't think you wanna restrict yourself from anything right now. Five, 10 years down the line, you might be able to solve some other problems, but if you take a grant with that...
So you think it'll take that long to get it in there?
I have no clue how long it'll take. But what I'm saying is, these grants are for 20 years.
Okay.
And somewhere down the line, if you ever wanna change into a motorized trail for anything, you're restricted from it by taking those grants.
Oh, okay.
And that's, and I always go to the caution side. Always leave your options open on this.
All I have to say is, we've had a garden destroyed up there because of ATV, I mean destroyed. Took off down the trail.
Okay. Any other questions?
I will move to approve the resolution for trail funding.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have an application for fireworks permit at Gerkey's Lake.
Everything looks good. There is a... No for operators training for the fireworks, but then the person that is operating the fireworks has operated them for five years. So... Thinking everything looks pretty good all the way through July... The way they wrote it, it looks like July 4th, but then the rain day is July 3rd, so I'm not quite getting that. So maybe they meant July 3rd with the rain day being July 4th. So, but I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I would say it was the motions for the July 4th. And if they plan, if rain's coming in, they'll do it the day before.
The day before?
Yeah, that's, that's why I would think.
Kinda how I look at it, too.
Well, we'll set those two days aside.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, I have four resolutions here. Budget appropriations, advance issuance of payments, interfund operating transfers, and budget appropriations adjustments within the same service area. And these are four that we have to do every year, and all they basically do is allow the auditor's office to do their job.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the budget appropriations for 15, 16 fiscal year.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for advance issuance of payment 15, 16 fiscal year.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oops, roll call, I'm sorry.
Oopsie.
Oh. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for interfund operating transfers.
Second it.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for budget appropriation adjustment within same service area fiscal year 15, 16.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ran through those too fast. Next, we have the appointment to Veterans Affairs Commission. Currently, we have Orv Gattan who would be, whose terms up. He was willing to do another term, three-year term, which would expire in 2018.
I'd make the motion to appoint, to reappoint Orv Gattan to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the appointment to zoning administrator. We've, this, we could appoint for whatever term we want to appoint for, one year, two years, three years, indefinite until we change. However, you guys wanna make your motion?
How has it been done in the past? Just a year at a time?
Yeah.
Well, I did talk to Don, and he's interested in taking it again. He says if no one else wants it, so... If it's one of those things that he would eventually like to give up, maybe we should do it for another year.
You're at least fine with me, yeah. So I'll make a motion to appoint John Nell as zoning administrator and have that to be revisited next year.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I'll just give it another 10 seconds here and go, and we can start going on this public auction for a county-owned property located near County Road Maintenance Shop. Rick, do you want me to turn this over to you?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. How you wanna handle this? I got the two bids.
So the format will be the... The opening up the bids, and then the announcement of those amounts, and then if both of the bidders are here, then they'll have the opportunity to raise their bids, and then the supervisors can take action on those bids and either accept or reject those. And then if we do complete the sale process that's up today, then we have a purchase agreement that will be executed, and then we'll have a public hearing down the road. And then, as long as there's no issues at the public hearing, then at that date, the deed would be issued from the supervisors. Make sense?
Yep.
So there is a bid from Amy Schmitz. Is Amy Schmitz here? The amount of $1 for purchase of the property, and there is a bid from Lynn and Jackie Wilson. You folks are here? Alright, very good. In the amount of $35. So those are the two bids. The format would be to see if either party would want to increase their bids, but it does not appear that Amy Schmitz is here, and is there any representative for her here? Does not appear that she has a designee on her behalf, so the bid that has been submitted by the Welsons is in the amount of $35, and the supervisors can accept that bid. They can ask for an alternative amount, whatever they would like to do.
Okay. This piece of property doesn't do us any good for anything. We had to mow it here last, what, two weeks ago?
Hasn't been used for a long time.
And it'll roll it back on the tax roll. Up to you guys.
Well, I don't think we wanna maintain it any longer, so... I guess I would move to accept the bid for $35 from Wilson.
Getting a pretty good deal out of it, but I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the bid of $35. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then from there, we'll have a public hearing and...
We'll just have some paperwork we'll sign here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
So I have the purchase agreement, and it just needs to be completed by me with a couple of my names in the, in the amount. And I'll just have you execute that. Is that... You wanna just do that by, or just... You've approved the sale. This is just the written documentation of that, so I don't know if you really need any, any further, any further action on that, so... And we'll get the public here in seven.
Okay, next one is agenda then.
Continue.
All right. Well, thanks, Rick, and thank you. Oh, next on the agenda is agreement with PJ Group and Associates. And this is something that we've talked about for a period of time. I know we've got some more questions. We don't have to act on it today, but...
Yeah, we've discussed, I mean, the, this contract is for four years, and we've discussed the term off and on, and...
Our last discussion was three years.
Yeah.
Yep. So if we'd like to make that a counterback for a period of time, we could sure do that. I know he'll be here next week.
Yeah, I think we should just wait and maybe discuss it with him next week.
Okay.
So I would move to table that.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to table this agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Tabled. Next, I have four changes status in the sheriff's office.
Make motion to approve the changes status for Sheila Lepley. Communications officer resignation as of June 18th.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Make motion to approve the change of status for Caitlin Henry. Communications officer, full-time promotion. Starting now.
She can help second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Make motion to approve the change of status for Ryan Buesman. Jail sergeants are not covered under the union contract, therefore, Buesman is not eligible for longevity pay. Let's see, I'm not sure, it's full-time.
It's just an hourly rate change.
Oh, so it's just, okay.
What you approved earlier, that listing of salaries, this just changes the dollar amount?
Correct. Okay.
That's what it is, alright. Of 10, 10 cents, so it's $19.31 per hour now.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And it looks like the same thing with Jason Foltz, to, up to $19.31 per hour. And full-time.
And this is the same situation?
Jail sergeant.
Okay.
You second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oops, I skipped the liquor license, didn't I? Oh, no. Next is liquor licenses. Application for liquor license, Backpocket Brewery LLC. And this is a group that has rented a little field area along D-41. We have the lease for that, and they wanna set up during the time of rag barry.
I would move to approve the Class B liquor license for Backpocket Brewing. I did look this up, and they do have a, a business down in Coralville, so... And this is something that they normally do, so I'll move to approve it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, I have a change of status in Community Services Department.
I have a rule for you on that. This is actually a letter of resignation for me on the social work position for Harden County, which you just appointed me to in January. So sorry about that, but legislative changes have dictated that I can't do the advocate and the social work position because of concern about conference interest. And I think Lynn has talked to you about that, so I resign. I need just the social work portion. And those legislative changes go into effect July 1st, so that's why we're...
Getting it done today?
Today. And all of a sudden Lynn's like, oh, it's time, so...
Okay.
Okay, I will move to approve Mary's resignation as social worker effective June 30th, 2015.
Seconds.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Thank you for the time you put in there.
I'll still be around. I'm like about the same.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next is we have an authorization for direct weekly withdrawals by Blue Cross Blue Shield. About $39,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the authorization for direct weekly withdrawals by Blue Cross.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is we have two homestead military credits, one to be disallowed and one to be allowed. One, the one to be allowed is allowed disabled veterans homestead.
Um, to approve the... Or to allow the, the disabled veterans homestead credit claims as submitted by the assessor.
Second.
It's been...
For 16 to 17-year.
Yeah.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
We have homestead credits that, for persons that are no longer eligible to receive them, that we need to disallow. So I'll move to approve those credits to be disallowed as submitted by the assessor.
The, the assessor, the treasurer. Who submits these, you are the assessor. Okay. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. For some reason, I thought that was treasurer.
No, they're, all the credits go through the assessor.
Oh, number 21, we do not have on the agenda. We don't, we can skip over that, which is the resolution for reappropriation amendment. And next, we have is an authorization letter to the governor regarding collection legislation bill.
I sent you a lot of emails.
I'm behind ya.
Carl, I asked Carl just to come over for a few minutes, and I, I don't know what you wanna do, whether you wanna do it or not. It's, it's kind of a political matter, and, and basically in a nutshell is that the county attorneys, I think through 60th and 13th, that do it at all, but we can participate in the collection of debt for unpaid fines. And it, it's worked relatively well. We do it in conjunction with the sheriff's office. Carl, you're his primary debt collector under this program for Harden County. There was an amendment made, laid to this particular bill that is going to change things some and basically put a private debt collector, is the primary debt collector, and it had, it, it may impact feasibility of having county attorneys, having their offices involved in the debt collection process. But if you read all of the, all the stuff that I sent you, there is a difference in opinion as to what impact it will have on it. And the, they have tied funding to the judicial branch, which impacts our court's offices to the tune of about $12 million. So, there is some significance in this legislation. County Attorneys Association sent me a, a letter this week urging county attorneys to approach the supervisors to see if they could send a letter to the governor requesting a veto certain provisions of this Senate file referenced in the emails, I think it's from him. Well, right after that, I then got bombarded with the other side of the story from the David Boyd in the State Court Administrator's Office saying that, that the impact to the county attorneys will not be as, as great as indicated. And then contacted County Attorney Association, saying, you know what, it'd be nice to get more of a fact check on this thing to see, you know, exactly what's gonna happen. I don't know if they know really what's gonna happen, but, but we understand the, the impact of the legislation is that once the debt collector gets a hold of it, county attorney's office won't, won't probably have any role in it. And that will, that will impact, I think, the feasibility of having a, you know, staff person spending, you know, basically 100% of their time collecting these debts. So, I'm not telling you you have to send the letter, not telling you have to approve it. I, I just felt it was important to at least bring it to your attention, that this is something that, because that money does go to the county, and it could have an impact on the county. If you look at the financial information provided by the court administrator's office, they, they don't, they don't necessarily, you know, say that it's gonna have as big an impact as, as the County Attorneys Association believes. So, it's entirely up to you, you know, obviously, the time is of the essence, you know, with, with the vetoes. But, but like I say, if, if it results in, in being vetoed, and then the, and then the judicial branch loses $12 million, and that impacts our court's offices. So I really don't, you know, I, I'm not sure I have a position other than the fact that, that I think Carl does a good job. I think that, that the counties that participate in the debt collection process, it's a benefit to those counties. This is legislation that passed that would have a negative impact on that, so I felt... So I felt it was my duty to at least bring it to your attention. I drafted a, uh, a letter, you know, for you to look at. You want to table it, fine, if you want to take action, if you want to hear more from, from Carla, that's fine, but I just wanted to at least get it on the agenda. And I think I got the information at about 9:30, and I called Nancy and got it on the agenda on time for at least you to look at. So I'll answer any questions, or Carla, you can do whatever you like.
I'd like to thank you for all the reading that you sent us this. But we went through it, and it, uh...
You can blame Matt. I put everything on my phone, so I have my email, and I can do it anytime, so...
But the way it was reads, no matter what, it's not a benefit for our county direction they're heading right now.
Correct, correct. I think, I think, I think that is, I think that's right. And I did share this with, with Carla. I, I have had experience with, with basically the numbers person that's involved at the State Administrators, uh, office. And he, he and I have not seen eye to eye before on, on his, his analysis of figures. He's very, very bright, uh, but he's a numbers man. And if you see the, if you see the information, it's all, it is, is based on, on information. They're not sure how it's going to pan out, but, but you're right, I think that's a good summary. If, if this particular provision passes, I, I don't think it's going to be a positive for the, for, for the county. I, I just don't, I just don't see it.
I would agree, and in some of the reading, I think there was, it was even mentioned that it would be part of this funding that would go to the courts would be tied to judges' raises. I was thinking it said in one of those.
Well, I think what they should be...
I think they see a, a capability for some revenues, and they're... So I don't think it's a, it's a negative impact on, or I do think it's a negative impact on counties, by all means. And it, and we have started the program, what was it, a year or two ago, with, um, having someone in that position, in Carla's position, for collecting those debts, and it's been working great for us. And I think they're thinking of one-size-fits-all in all the counties, but some counties are more aggressive at reclaiming those fees than others. And I think we have a great program, and I'm, I'm definitely on board with your, your thoughts, and I think it would negatively impact us. So I'm, I'm all in favor of sending a letter. I don't know about you guys, but I'm, I'm definitely in favor of sending a letter.
I think I could, did I give you the draft?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and then, and then, if, if you do approve it, then Nancy can, can send it. My other concern is that, uh, you know, most county attorneys feel that this is something that, that should have been more invented, and they really didn't do that. They just tagged it on. They might want to have some hearing, and, and can the debt collection process be improved? Sure, but, but there's no, I, I don't care how many numbers they, they show because of the fact that there's a shuffle in the county attorney's office. It's lower down to the point that, that they may never get the opportunity to collect it. It, it's just not a benefit to, it's not a benefit to the county.
I, I sent a letter to the supervisors as well, action needed on this for the exact same reason you just said also. So, yeah, I'm in full support of this.
Well, I would make the motion then, um, to send a letter, uh, whether it's this one or... I think Rick's letter sounds, sounds good, so I'd make a motion to send, uh, the letter to the governor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send this letter to the governor.
Well, or a letter.
And, and I'll tell you, this was kind of a fast heal for me to get this drafted. And, and I know that, that Nick and Carla have financial figures, so, so that may be of, you know, that may be of benefit. We can revise that to just, uh, you know, add, add an attachment, see Exhibit A.
Okay.
Put the information in there that just shows this is, you know, this is what's happening. We do have a successful program, and we feel that this legislation will jeopardize that. So if you want it revised, if you want to revise it, that's fine, but I think it needs to get out this week.
I'll just say a letter to Governor Branstad in opposition of this...
Authorizing me to sign, the chair to sign?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is, uh, to send a letter to the governor authorizing the chair to sign on behalf of this issue?
Second of that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Thank you for getting this together on the floor.
It seems like we're getting our hands slapped for being progressive.
Yeah.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Utility permit, Secondary Roads Department.
No permits. Working on the bridge, West of Alden, are going to port a deck next week. So it should be up and running for rag ride.
Oh, awesome.
The box, they've just got a good start on that. It should be far enough along, they're hoping that the bikes can cross. It might be a little rough, might be a gravel crossing for the day, but... We're hoping, but that's still up in the air.
It's better than building something. Was, weren't they talking about having some type of a path to go around?
Yeah, a path around it, so...
This would be better than that, for sure.
Thinking of letters to the governor, you guys kind of got an issue there from a state representative also. Do we need to address that with a letter in response on B Avenue?
Probably.
Which is, which is, our hands are tied, and I don't think they understand the fact...
Right, yeah.
I mean, if, if you want to go through... Yeah, we've been getting emails back and forth, and we, we've asked them to come down here, and they said, "Well, we don't need to, we just want you to know what your fix is." Well, the fix is a daily fix, and that's what we're, hands are tied on trying to solve the problem, and we're, they're trying to address it to them as well. And they're part of the problem in this situation with tying our hands. So sometime we'll need to, uh, address a letter to them on that.
To Pat Grassley.
Yep. Or his staff member, I should say.
Yeah.
They were requesting on, on, part of, they were requesting on behalf of him, so I think it would be...
Yeah, any more highlights?
We asked him to come and discuss it.
Yeah.
Didn't think that was necessary.
Any highlights on what's going on on the road? I mean, for, just for the people to understand it.
Yes.
It, it's a high-traffic road, and when the ground is wet, it's hard to maintain the road. And due to all the heavy traffic that's being driven across, am I missing anything? They have a right, they have a right to drive on the road, but we can't prevent it, and we can't keep maintaining it on a daily basis every time it rains.
And we've been keeping track of the tickets of Mount Rock we've put on there, and so, I mean, that's something we'll have to put in our ledger, too, how much we've spent on just...
Yeah, that would be...
One mile, two miles.
Two mile stretch, you know?
Yeah.
So, which that takes away from everyone else in the county.
Right. So we need to show our concerns that way as well. Otherwise, I threw that out there.
We see Pat every once in a while, here and there, we can definitely corner him and talk to him about it.
Yeah, I, I just don't think that they're aware of, they think it's just down, and we just got to open it up for them. Is my interpretation of their response, and that's not the case. It's a daily occurrence, it seems to be.
It's every other day, for sure, we're on that, you know? If it's not raining, or...
Right.
You know, trying to keep ahead of that, too.
How many houses are along there? Along that stretch?
There's one clear on the north end.
Yeah, there's not many on...
Past the, past the confinement facilities.
And that's it, so...
It's a definite pattern, what's destroying the road, because it stops right there at the confinement. And it's not their fault either, they have to feed their livestock. It's just what can we do and what can be done?
It's just the one house.
Okay. Otherwise, anything else for Secondary Roads?
Anything I can think of.
All right, well, we can go to opening bids for fiscal year 16, 2016, fuel supply of Secondary Roads and Conservation Department.
Just have one bid. Hope it's a good one.
Yeah.
Same as last year's?
Yes, same company, AgManageFS. It's for us, for diesel, gas, and propane, and then gas and propane for Conservation Office. Looks like it's, this is based on their invoice, but to charge us so much over their price is what they're going to charge us, if that makes sense. And they have 10.9 cents over their cost. I was looking at last year, it was 11 and a half. Year before, it was 11.8, so it's a little lower this year. Looks like everything's signed and looks good. So I guess I would recommend that we accept this little bid. Stipulation that Daryl can take a look at it when he gets back. If he sees an issue with it, we can address it then, but...
To accept, accept it?
Accept the bid from AgManageFS for 10.9 cents over their price.
Okay. I'd make a motion to accept the bid for 10.9 cents over their price for the fiscal year of 2016 for secondary road, fuel supply for Secondary Roads and Conservation Department.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, and did you want that?
And that was, uh, to Daryl's acceptance.
Contingent on his...
On his acceptance.
Are you going to amend that into the motion?
If I have to amend that, I...
Let's amend it into the motion.
I amend it at him.
Do I hear your second on that?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded on the amendment, according to Daryl's acceptance. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now it's been moved and seconded to accept it, the bid, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else for us? Any other business? Hearing none, I'll ask for a adjournment.
To adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.